Are we recording now?
I just tried.
Is it my Laker word?
Yes, no, yes, no.
It still said stop.
Next time.
No, no. She said that one day I haven't had a full night's sleep all week and I was like, hey, I haven't had a full night's sleep. It's like, there it is. I hope my dad will be able to answer.
I'll have a pool out of there.
No, he's not able.
I'll have a pool out of there.
Yeah, that's it.
Say my wallet.
He will not be attending.
I'm gonna take it out to actually use it because my wallet's got those.
Another one, Glenn, be careful what I say. Hang on, Glenn beside me, she'll keep you in line. She'll do, give me the like I gave her shampoo.
We should be hot or ready.
Gee.
But this one is.
Oh, it's underneath.
Yeah, I just said that.
God, Wayne notices everything.
That's what he does. Today.
No, but like Monday now, but like Tuesday.
They have a Wednesday, Thursday start and then I'll either work that weekend.
You let your grandkids in here, Wayne?
I bet Wednesday goes also. I start, that's what I was saying, I start in the middle of this storm, just like last time. That's how it says, that's how it says it. I was like, yeah, well, so is everyone else doing on the same team this year?
Okay.
Or this time?
Got the camera ready. Ready, Glenn?
I'm ready, yeah.
All right, I'll call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. First thing we have to do is we have to give the office oaths to Rick and Jamie. You gonna have them read them off?
I'll have them stand up and make them read all of it off to you. I'll have you together. Do you have?
I do have a prop.
Yeah, separate.
Yep. Is it the last one?
I, Rick Baumann, of Beulah, North Dakota, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and I will face the discharge of duties of the office as the county commission according to the best of my ability, so help me God, under the per-
I, Jamie Folk of Hayes, North Dakota, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, that I will face the discharge of duties of the office as the county commission according to the best of my ability, so help me God, under pains and penalties of perjury.
I'll have you both sign it and then I'll know that for you.
Then you're official.
Mm-hmm. Now we can do business.
Yeah. I see the state gives the new one the coin or something like that.
Coin, yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah. Anna Novak had her coin.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um, the agenda. I had some discussion with Samantha and she talked with Todd too, but typically what we had done in the past, if we had switched the date, we considered it a special meeting and I don't think that's entirely correct and Todd agreed with me on that one. So if anybody has any changes to the agenda, we can add those at this point. One of them that Glenn brought to me was that there's another duplicate check to add. Duplicate check number five, four, two, three, two for David Fleeger. She'll address that when she comes in. I just had an email about an hour ago from Carmen. I'm just gonna talk about the November ninth through eleventh weather storm. There's a disaster declaration, so if we can add that to other business. Is there any other additions?
You said November ninth.
Yep.
Cindy requested that nine thirty?
Yeah, under the zoning one, she's gonna take off that Randy Enzi thing. She's still looking into how to accommodate that, so we can take that off. But if there's any questions, we can still discuss it when Cindy's in here, if she has any updates to it. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll give it.
Give it to Jamie.
Give it to Jamie, all right, Jamie seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. We have the minutes from the November sixteenth. Even if you weren't a commissioner at the time, we're just approving the minutes, so you can still vote on it.
I make a motion to approve those presented.
Okay, motion by Jean to approve the minutes as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion, corrections or additions? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick? I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Now to the bills. Did you explain the proper procedure?
We gotta keep them in order. So you just kinda go through and if you see anything that seems odd or out of place or something like that once you're done, then we just look forward to be like, absolutely, keep them in the right order.
Okay, but they're all different, okay.
Yep. I'd say we need to diligent about keeping them accurate.
If you wanna remain on good terms with the auditors, obviously keep them in order.
Don't just do this.
Well, not that difficult.
That's more important on the second meeting of the month.
Nope, that's true, I miss.
Yeah.
Right now, that's true.
No comment.
It's March, so we.
That do good.
If there's something we question.
Oh, no, 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 come on.
Just so those in the audience know that we're just going through every bill. That's the total of all the bills.
We always pay that one.
Why?
We always pay that one, the year before for January.
I'm surprised, I'm like.
Like last year, we didn't start until, well, last year we ended it with January's too, so then the beginning of the year, we started with February's chart.
Gotcha, okay. Just threw me off a little bit when I'm like, I'm like, we aren't even in January yet.
We're barely into December.
Yeah.
So does that stay on twenty twos then, or does that one bill go onto twenty threes as far as where we track it fiscally?
I know they're really, the rates change.
That's it now, I was able to answer one. I'm used up. Surprised I knew that you had an answer. Oh, you're gonna see some bills. You're gonna see some bills that make you just go hmm. Mine usually are jail supplies.
And after you get your answer, you're like, oh.
Yep. You'll see.
And if you have rooms and stuff, so that must be meals, is what that is. Oh, I thought that you didn't get it? Oh, my gosh.
Are you doing it wrong though, Rick?
Good measure?
Yep.
Must be something about that chair. Makes it work for me.
I know I should know the Collin Lois by heart, but I don't, first dig to.
That's north of DGC, is the one that goes to Cato. Yeah, twenty six goes east and west and then you go around that corner and then turns to fifteen. And then if you go west to county thirteen, that's still twenty six. So twenty six goes from the Y all the way to county thirteen and once it turns north, it's county fifteen.
Really?
Yep.
A short little piece.
That's a couple miles.
Okay.
It used to be longer until we closed it and it's still fifteen north of Cato, goes to eighteen oh six.
Is there an updated map somewhere? To see some of those roads?
Carmen.
Carmen. I mean, I know some of them.
I know a couple. Wayne knows them all.
Who knows them? Yeah.
You probably did two traps, huh?
I know a fair amount of them. Then when I start throwing out sections, towns, you've been ranged, then you're like. That's awfully specific. Yep. I have the whole map with all those sections in my office. I would never completely take the notes of these meetings and bring it to my office and then look at them.
I get it.
Yeah, we ordered it in like June and it just got here, so.
Did you already answer this one? I think it's one you answered right. Is this a hand? Yes. I've seen this every month. I never see so many bills, I don't remember them.
We need to get back on board between the crowd and the office here, please.
The majority of them come from Bronson's, it seems like. They do get some from Crownsies, but I think the majority is from Bronson's.
We have a shop in Golden Valley.
Yeah, it's on the west side.
Yeah, like on the very outskirts of the town.
Yeah, right on the east side.
Interesting. They don't usually come in on the west side of Golden Valley so much.
I know.
I'm just gonna switch it up.
Through the county a little bit.
Going on the east side.
What, touring the county? Treasures, I see it.
There are reports on buried treasures.
Yeah. You didn't know we had some? It's a good thing you're here to report on it.
Waiting for the ID comment or something. I'll consider only updating the agenda like five times.
Oh, my God, great.
We were due for one table.
Be gentle.
Be gentle, uh-huh. Yeah, it's stapled there.
I have a couple staples.
Basically, one of those big ones.
It did, it was that almond, didn't it?
Yeah. She just barely made it through.
So there's a lot of stuff.
Normal, I had to use the big stapler on this.
The worst thing with that big stapler is when you didn't get a big enough staple in there and you get, and you're like, oh. It just starts to curl up, does it? Does everybody have to deal on the notaries now?
I don't, I'm not sure. I guess I don't keep track of the clauses out there.
Yeah. Just the.
I know all bills, dispatchers have to be notaries too.
Notaries, yeah.
Yeah.
Is this, is this like a thing?
Yep.
We're all in the system.
Yep, you gotta fuel.
If I would open my county twenty bridge, my mileage would be a lot less.
I don't know about these traps.
Is it the first one or second one?
It's handwritten.
Oh, the circular file isn't next to.
It isn't anymore, it really is.
I think that actually is coming from around the side.
I think so.
On this one, I wonder if they took it out of our payment. Cause it's September thirty six dollars and ours. They adjusted it down here, but hopefully on the next statement. Yeah, I guess. That's our system, I didn't notice that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Only because we had issues with our Simmons and Hughes bill as well, so that's why we questioned. Make sure that it was caught because. We had two extra fuel tanks charged to ours.
Oh, really?
So like significant amounts of money.
They did that on.
Did they? Did they credit it then?
I talked to them, they credited that they had actually added another payment from last month onto this bill, which would have gone to another account. So changed that also, so that the written alone, the eight thousand sum.
Eight thousand nine hundred twenty eight dollars, forty cents?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we personally had issues, I think that's why I was making sure that they.
Triple checking it.
Yeah.
He was prepared.
It's funny that they put Jelly Belly thank you on here. Here's, uh, here's your jelly beans, thanks. It's for extension, yeah.
I don't know of any, cause it's a specialized charging system that you have to do for it and stuff.
I'm not like just like regular extinguishers.
Well, the fire department, I think, can fill them, but I think for like inspection.
Well, there's a place in Miami.
Or maybe the fire department's accessible.
I thought they had a person that came.
Or they called.
Went through there, yeah. I thought they had a person that came, or they went through there, yeah.
Holy.
I would have put it together.
For a dollar less?
Right. Five twenty-four.
I was thinking, oh, you were serving my age back.
I can do anything. That should be the guy's gas card, yeah.
Yeah, why, like, why are some other deputies so much more than I do?
No, it's like the, I could put it test together.
Why are some other deputies like so much more? We, cause they go.
Or do more stuff. Or they might have to do transporters.
The paper, or paper service and stuff.
Well, and transportation transporters, that's.
And I suppose it might be depending on what shift they're on and.
Yep.
Exactly.
Do you like kind of keeping track of what like the election costs?
Yep, we will have, um, we actually have to submit a report to the secretary. But all the bills have, come, they're coming.
Not just see that once, let's raise that question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe knowing what it kind of actually costs.
I reckon actually learn what, what we, what we get on that election call if you want to see it.
Eventually, yeah.
We can't get rid of the election, Jean, just say it on?
No, but I'd just like to let the people know, you know.
This is what it costs, yeah.
They think it's, you know, it doesn't cost her anything, I, I think they'll be amazed at what it actually costs. Cause a lot of them, you know, have five polling spots.
Right.
I kinda, I like this.
Yeah, if it costs, I don't know, I'm just throwing a number out, twenty grand for a polling place.
It's probably an issue.
To take that pitch five, it gets really expensive.
Right.
Yes.
Then not only that, you mean like a dozen people at each location.
Yes. When people ask, yes, if you don't.
It's not differentiated.
They just have to.
They just write it out?
And like, you go to different mediums, and they have to break them out, and get like a check for one, and one actually pays them. Unless you get money to turn their spots.
Can you track them around the thing when you leave your house, do you hear?
Yep, yeah. So if I leave this, my first night, I left the house, it's right here, and then I just have to, yeah, that's what I use every time.
Okay.
That's what I get from it, and then I see the key, just to live.
The new one's slower.
Sorry.
When you've never done it before. I don't think so.
There's this extension, you can see it, yeah.
That's, uh, sure, the people, yeah, feel encouraged. Nice to see that they're filling in different locations when they're actually around. It's, uh, Amazon, they're two hundred, they charge for it. Just because it doesn't have chip doesn't mean you don't have that, they, so it, and it could be, uh, so.
Such a good chip.
I didn't know it was a big famous, so.
I didn't realize the extension office was part of.
It's going on. I got thrown off because of the name, who's this guy? Like, oh, I knew it.
Oh, yeah.
I know.
So this holiday end one with the sales tax on it, do you just call them and tell them that we're tax exempt or?
They, they took care of that before they handed it in to me.
Okay.
So.
I just saw that it said, it had a different.
Yeah, that was extension.
So this ALJ bill, this will be final bill then?
Yes.
Okay. I see on the second page it says budget remaining after invoice is zero, so.
As far as I know, it's.
My assumption is.
She said she, it's done.
It's approved, yeah.
So. You never know, so.
Most of those are my charges. It was implemented before I got here.
Nope. It is wild out. But, yeah.
So.
You have some budget that you have to leave.
What's that?
So if any other department holds the one that you have, they still have.
We just do it evenly, you say it was on, I'm on it.
He has a monthly dispatch charge. It's, yeah, it's the IT part.
Probably some of this stuff.
Yeah, the backup.
And it's mandatory for her to have to fix.
Remind us of the same as amended on that bill. Cause we really haven't approved it yet, so we can, huh? Right, we haven't approved it yet, so there's like a total number, is incorrect.
My total was wrong.
And it gets changed.
I don't think that does it, no.
As long as you just let us.
That's the hazard mitigation.
That's good for five years.
Yeah, it's good for five years, it's a once in a year, they don't make expense. It allows us to be eligible for. Disaster.
Cause sometimes we're just looking at certain things, yeah.
You have to go through these, or somebody's.
Here, that, that's just to.
Just run that past, maybe one again.
Doesn't have to be them, but I think pick up the last one. Um, if it's under, well, professional services, you definitely don't have to bid. But by contractor, professional.
Because if you just.
We can't hold it.
As presented. We'll pay as presented. Yes, once we okay, we have to change, then we have to.
It just doesn't have any totals.
Right now.
Well, I guess while you're. Oh, that's, that looks good.
This total, twenty-seven, ninety-nine, twenty-six, ninety-four.
This is right here.
Anyway, that's just my.
Right.
Should I go faster?
You go wherever it needs to go.
I don't know what I'm looking at.
Right, it takes a while.
Yeah, we, we've paused on them before.
Mm-hmm.
December is usually more than notice, because.
I was just like, this is a little chubbier than usual.
I, I know, I, I understand, but I mean, like, let me just look at it for its face value, you know, I wanna say.
It's possible that you just got it now, I mean, really, yeah. You look at everything else.
We're just got.
Right, maybe we still haven't gotten Angela's, that we ordered a year ago, over a year ago.
They call it a enterprise fund.
Oh, and then they balance these. Oh, it, that rings around, take the bad tire, that, okay. Running down. So there's less to hold.
Yeah, I mean, if we.
Oh, yeah, they have one in the shop here too.
That, uh, I've heard at some, the candy shops, that's the highest margin tool they have.
I bet, yeah.
Ten minutes later.
Exactly.
So like these scrambers, it's what they, what the individual has to pay a fee for to. Like, how do you, fee for it, like, cause it's.
Yeah, that, it basically, yeah, they say degrees of heading, so that should take over this, cause that's like, of the traffic, as we have the races, we have.
Right.
And sometimes people don't pay their fees.
There's that, yeah. Do we have a lot of juvenile students, don't we, Y C C?
We better not.
Maybe this is just.
Probably, that's why everything's. But, I don't know, it's probably just.
Did you get some course?
Yeah, that's just one. One per month, every twenty-eight days, it looks like.
Yeah.
Can you set the, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And that's why we have retail in the shop.
Yeah.
That's what I said, I was like, do we have a lot of these?
Hopefully not. Mm-hmm, and that one didn't even have special needs, a lot of them do that, and that's really. I think it would be worth it.
See what are the, what are the big things that.
Mm-hmm. What to be aware of.
Focus on.
Yeah.
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 All right, let's pause with the bills and we'll go to the treasurer's report.
Okay, I'm hoping that treasurer's report thing is broad enough to cover an additional topic that's not up there, but. Um, the first thing I need is I need to cancel two checks and send out duplicates, so I need a motion to, um, stop payment on five four three three four and five four two three two so that I can reissue the checks to those people.
I make a motion that we stop payment on checks five four two three two and five four three three four, so that they can be reissued.
Motion by Liza, sorry, Jamie.
Sorry, second.
Jamie seconded that, any discussion? Did you have a question, Jean? No, okay. Uh, saying no discussion, Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Okay, and then the next thing is, I called Capital Credit Union the other day to do some stuff with the CDs and whatnot, and found out Darby and Beth are still on there.
Okay.
Oh. Beth canoes in from ten years ago, mind you. Um, they want me to specifically remove those two people and make sure that Alice and I are named to be on those accounts. I'm wondering if I can get some kind of a blanket motion to just cover all the accounts we have, because this is the second time I've been in here for this, because these banks all want stuff in the minutes, that Alice and I are the signers, and when appropriate Kathy, and that everybody else get removed, so you can come up with a good motion to do that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, um.
I make a motion that we authorize.
I make a motion that we authorize. The treasurer's department, specifically Don, to adjust any name signatures that are in error at this time, and only have Don and Alice on those at this time, and Cathy, if appropriate.
Okay. Motion by Liza, seconded by Rick. Do you think that'll be sufficient?
I hope so.
Okay. And if not, we just have to do it again.
Let us know when we'll do what we need to do, okay?
Any other discussion? You good, Gwen? Okay. Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Okay, now the fun one. Um, I know Marvin mentioned last meeting, I think it was, that we are scheduled to get mineral royalties back. We are getting them this month.
Okay.
So. Um, I talked to Lynn Spiehobek, and we kind of decided since we're kind of, since we've had like a year and a half gap in these almost, and since there's a new treasurer, a new auditor, a new commissioners, maybe we should revisit the distribution. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, if you look at the paperwork I gave you, um, they voted to give forty percent to the county, thirty percent to the cities, and thirty some percent to the schools. And we did that based on population. Um, you know, like you'll have got whatever percentage of the total population. And then that's how we split it up. The county is not authorized to give away any of that money, or is not.
Obligated?
Obligated, there's the word I'm looking for, to give away any of that money. So you can do, you can keep it all if you want to. You can take whatever percentage you want, put the rest of it into a separate account, a different account, and use it as grant money if the cities or the schools would come to you and want some of that money. That might be kind of complicated in my opinion, but that's up to you guys get to make that decision. Um, the other thing you can do is you can do it as a percentage like we've been doing it, you can change the percentages that are set right now, or you can just leave it as it is. Now, we get the money on the fourteenth, if you guys want to throw this around in your heads and decide at the next meeting how you want to do that, that's fine, as long as I get. Some way of doing it before the end of the month, so it goes in this month, okay? Um, FYI, I did some computing. Um, last, the last full year, we got mineral royalties, the county got one hundred forty thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Of the three hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty cents that was dispersed. Forty percent.
What was the total amount we'd be getting?
Um, that year you got one hundred, or the total total, like. I don't know, we don't know, it's, it changes every month. It's not a straight up amount, so I can't give you that, but I, what we got in nineteen, I did figure out for a total.
This is monthly, we receive this?
No, quarterly.
Okay.
And it was three hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty cents all total. And the county's part of that was forty percent.
I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I'd like to read through this and probably give you direction at the next meeting.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yep, that's fine. Um, I did include the century code on what it's supposed to be spent on, and, um, if you have any questions, you guys can just call me.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely say let's put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
So that way I can.
Nope, that's fine with me.
I'd hate to make the rest of it.
Wrap my head around it.
Well, I don't think we were supposed to get it this soon, so I was quite surprised when the email came in that said we were getting it already, so that was a nice little surprise.
So this would have been a payment on third quarter?
Yes, the one we get in December is for the quarter ending nine thirty.
Not every day we just get some.
I know, right?
And have to make a decision.
It's nice to have to make a decision on how to get money and rather than spend it, right?
That's right.
Exactly.
And then the last thing I have is, does anybody have any questions on the report, for those of you guys that are new, do you? Wanted to have any questions for me?
I don't know if it's so much on the report, but we send out statements, what, next week?
Oh, no, they went out yesterday.
Yeah, I sent them.
Okay, perfect.
Yesterday.
I didn't get it in the mail yet, so.
Yep.
I, I probably won't ask one now, but I will stop by and ask some more.
Oh, absolutely, yes. You guys are always welcome to stop by and ask whatever questions you need to. Or want to.
Okay. Any questions for Don? Thanks, Don.
You're welcome.
We'll get back to reviewing our bills.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's their. It's the, it's their membership. So. The. That's where she has to send it to, yep, this one.
Just step off.
Yeah.
That's right.
Right there, separate. That's how I read it.
We should have learned less in Denver than I wanted.
What?
Dude, we should have learned less in Denver and more in San.
Right?
I was like looking at.
How could you do that?
Four hundred and forty dollars.
Yeah.
I, I own copy of the. Still highlighted.
Is that Don's?
Here she is.
Oh, yeah.
Do, I don't know. But do we want to put the amount in there of Dave's check?
She has it.
She has it?
Yeah.
Nice today.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping on it.
On that one thirty-two sander, I think it is. Well, this is a twelve foot chain, that last one was a ten foot chain.
They're kind of a. Pretty key piece of equipment. Just, you use them, sell them, and then when you're using it, it's cold.
Right, and then they're like, no, I don't want to work it.
Right, and then you throw a bunch of heavy stuff on it.
On that says one thirty-two and one twelve, two different sanders. I feel a little better. There is, I'm like. The one thirty-two is on there for those. You got issues one thirty-two.
Yeah.
Hopefully that's not, I mean, we have twenty.
Right?
We went from not enough to excessive.
Right? We look crazy there.
I do like the new like plow trucks that they got, not new, but new to.
Where we put the new plow on it?
The plow, yeah, like the plow truck versus the maintainers when they clear the roads. It's much nicer. And it's. Faster.
Right.
More efficient.
Yeah. Go a little bit harder.
Personal things.
Oh. Oh, here they, on hers, they changed the tax exempt on hers versus the other, like on Craig's, it was written. I still don't understand the spreadsheet. The numbers don't make sense, but they didn't make sense on that.
There's a formula on the Mac, like, you'll see the number like two, three, four, one, two, three.
That one doesn't have it on the back.
There it is.
Oh, there.
Okay.
So like.
That, that would make.
You get it per DM, huh?
This thing.
I trust you guys, you know, just to me.
But, cause they just do one, two, three, for first, second, third.
Oh, I see. Where's the fourth?
Is that fourth? We gotta make sure you're within the times.
That makes sense. Okay. See, that makes sense.
Not everything we do makes sense, doesn't it?
Sometimes, those come together.
I don't know, I heard her name is wrong in this one. They're all. We're missing K's.
Oh, yeah.
J's bad. It was odd that it's.
Uh, just lose my.
We're just going through our bills here. We got road here at ten and then a couple other things, so. Just because we're not talking doesn't mean we're not busy. No. Um, Charlie's at, um, work meetings and I don't know where he gets that, but. I'll probably just discuss it as we continue with the bills.
I wanted to. I was. I was like, I don't want to hear.
Like.
Did something happen?
I might, okay.
I mean, really. Five hands, five piles, I think it's gonna still be.
So these were the real factors that were behind this. Shipping and handling.
As we continue with the bills here, I'll just address, um, stuff on the agenda that has to relate to the roads. Um. Talking with Charlie yesterday, County Seventeen Bridge. Ken has either submitted to DOT or he's in the process of submitting to DOT, um, to go out for RFP on County Seventeen Road Bridge. If you remember, well, I guess some of the commissioners will remember the new ones, um, there was a certain amount of funding that the state had. It was kind of earmarked COVID, um, there are special project numbers, and I believe it's, just off the top of my head, it was about eighty-two, eighty-three thousand dollars. That's set aside for, um, engineering and expenses, so this road will be under that account. Um, so the majority of the engineering, if not all of it, will be paid, um, from that program from the state. And then we also received notice that, um, federal government is increasing funding towards roads. So when Charlie originally talked about this, it was thought as maybe a twenty-six project, um, with funding in place, it could possibly be a twenty-four project. And that will be eligible for the eighty-twenty, um, federal grants, so approximately twenty percent local funding, eighty percent federal. Since we haven't gone out for the RFP on the engineering or anything, um, we haven't started on that project, so I'm assuming probably. Late fall, maybe winter bidding, um, for that project, and then we can go forward, um, based on what we get for that.
They don't have, uh, engineers estimate yet for that project, do they?
I don't think so, because we'll have to go through the RFP process, yeah, and then that will be estimated after we, um, pick up a consulting firm to assist with that. Um, and that's all handled through DOT, so, um, Ken will submit the application, and DOT will actually do the posting. We'll receive, um, the RFPs here, then have to make a decision, and then we'll report to the DOT who we decide on.
Is that for the engineers?
Correct. Yeah. And then as far as the County Twenty-One and County Twenty-Seven and Fifteen patching, um, that's in the bills that we're reviewing. Um, the County Twenty-One, that's, um, north of the bridge that goes over the haul road at Coteau. Uh, Coteau, well, or North American Coal will reimburse us the expense on that. County Twenty-Seven is the road that goes north of Hazen, to Hazen Bay Road, there was some patching there. And then County Fifteen, as we talked before, um, is that location. County Twenty-Six comes by DGC and then goes west towards, um, County Thirteen, and then it turns into Fifteen as it goes north, so there was some patching there. Um, and we were, we were under our patching budget, and then plus with the reimbursement we'll get on County Twenty-One, we should be good based on budget on, on the patching. And that's all I have on, on the roads.
It's very.
Smaller number, less people?
And then it's going.
Bigger number, less people. I had a lot of outdated stuff. Hospital was the cheaper option. You don't want a sixteen or anything.
What do you use to play basketball?
The sixteen, yes.
Yikes.
Yep. Eighteen sounds about, these are a lot of eighteens.
Was that before, after I was born? No, no, that's been out for a while now.
Got them all straightened out, yeah? Okay. Was it just the one?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, no. Oh, no, I mean on your totals. Oh, the order? Ah. Next time we'll have her shuffle them. And then I'll leave the rope. The wrath of Gwen. The wrath of Gwen. You want to show Yellowstone? It's not bad, but his daughter. Very, very intelligent, but wow. She's a firecracker.
Let's see if I get it right. Because yeah, this one. And then they have them right here. Because I like them to say who's who. I get tired of it.
That would have been mine from this one, just to see.
Who all has it?
Who has it?
But I really think we should take it like that first net again too, just to see.
If it makes a difference. So what is, oh, this is Western.
How's your?
How's this covered? Good? I get better than her.
Yeah, I think my first start was. Well, I think it's improved.
Maybe they've gone to the same.
I would say, I think they put up a panel town or draft it for more. Yeah, so law enforcement there.
Is all for common city?
Not. They checked on it, I think, it was, I think it was last year but the year before on the price compared and they're about the same.
It doesn't help to do with Cyrus.
Nope.
No.
But Cyrus, you can get a phone and actually get it on your phone as opposed to like a radio. But not too many, and that one, this coverage is horrible. I like, does it work as well as a handheld?
I didn't want to take this apart because there's a lot in here.
Yeah, we usually don't take it up there. We just make sure that none of the other bills got shoved in. It's such a big packet.
It was just on the back, yeah.
So that's really all we ever do on this side, is just make sure. Because every so often, sometimes another bill gets shoved in. So usually I'll look at like this and look at these.
That's where I, that's where I started catching.
Yeah, and then you can see your main things. Right though. It's all ready for P and Z too.
Trying to sound, sort of watch my phone.
Has the total that we have for this month? Or like a pile? I guess it's not really this month.
But.
What we just went.
Let's all out there.
Okay, everybody should have seen the bills. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, Rick moved to approve the bills as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing on Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. We're gonna move on to some of the other business here. I got an email from Carmen this morning. The state is working on a state disaster declaration for the storm events from November ninth through the eleventh. She would have sent it to city, city auditors, highway departments. She needs kind of an estimated number in that forty-eight hour window. If Mercer County breaks the threshold of thirty-seven thousand dollars and Oliver County breaks the threshold of low over eight thousand dollars, we can be included with the disaster declaration. And then if we are eligible, then backup documentation needs to be provided to the state by December nineteenth. So I see Beaver and Jerry are in here, so kind of a little heads up for you guys. That's all I had to talk about the November ninth through eleventh disaster part that we have on the agenda. I know a few of the people in the audience are here kind of for an update on the Talon Metals. I've talked to Todd, who is their government relations person. They're still working out the deals on the land purchase for the location here in the county. And then also, we talked a little bit about what that facility would need and how it would be implemented in the county. So the process they take ore from a mine in Minnesota, they'll rail it over to here and then they'll do the initial processing, which removes some of the non-nickel parts of it. The ore contains nickel, copper, and cobalt along with various other elements. But the reason that Mercer County is a location is that through their process, they need a basic component, which fly ash is from the coal-fired plants. They mix it with their process and then that's essentially what neutralizes the pH within the process. One of the questions I had for them was, can they, can they use ash from our pits? And they said, no, it has to come directly from the plant, so it has to be a fresh source, which I thought was, was great for us. That means that they need the coal-fired energy just as much as, as we like to maintain that. So there's other components of it that are proprietary at this point. And then once they're, get approval on the land sale, they're anticipating coming up to Mercer County to kind of go over their, their plans, what they can talk about, what they can't talk about. They have a local contact that I talked to, I believe it was last week. He's also trying to get them up here as soon as possible. But a lot of this, they, they got a grant from the Department of Energy. So that's the federal government, so they have to follow some of the policies that the federal government's giving them as far as talking about it and what they can release and when they can release it. So they're in communication with some of us locally. And like I said, they're, they're hoping sooner than later that they can come up and kind of answer questions, maybe at a possible open forum. And I'm trying to think, Owen, I asked him, you know, how the process, if it was like a high energy consumption, which he said it was, based on the components of it, what they're talking about. They're trying to be carbon neutral with it. So also the fact that Mercer County and North Dakota have CO2 sequestering wells helps with that. They'll possibly be looking at alternative energy sources, wind, solar, things like that to help with the, with the energy consumption. I did remind them that, and I wasn't sure if they knew or not, but they do now, that Mercer County, it does contain the state's largest hydro plant in the state. So there is renewable energy qualified within our county already. So that's basically my update. That's what I've, what I know so far, what I've been able to share. And like I said, he didn't share much with me that he couldn't. He just said that there's a few things until deals are done and the federal government gives them the okay to, to give further updates than, than we can. So I don't know if there's any questions from the commission or people in the audience. Can kind of open it up if you have any questions, but basically what I told you is what I know. Jerry?
So what permits do they have to acquire or permissions from you guys to before they move forward after that?
Um, as of this point, we don't have anything in our ordinance as far as nickel processing plant. They would be in an industrial location. If that location is existing industrial, they wouldn't need any new zoning requirements. That's a good point. He did mention that there is a existing facility. I don't know if, I can't remember if it was the mine or if it's the processing facility and I think it's Eagle Point, Michigan. So I guess from our standpoint and our planning and zoning board, I plan to reach out and see if they have any zoning ordinances that pertain to it, so we don't have to start from scratch. I'm not sure how the PSC would be involved with this, but generally something to this magnitude would have to have state and PSC approval. So we'll have to work with, with the PSC group.
Does environmental go through PSC or is that all federal?
That, that I don't know. I, my assumption would be something joint would possibly be federal and PSC. Nickel processing is, is kind of new to me. All of us, yeah. So. Good questions? Any other questions from the commissioner of the audience?
Is there any safety concerns with this type of facility?
Safety concerns? I guess we'd have to know what their plan was. You know, as far as the processing goes, like I mentioned, the process creates an acidic trailings, which to combat that is the, is the fly ash. But you'd have to fall under the same disposable or disposal regulations that we use to dispose of fly ash currently. Certified waste, waste or landfill pits. Also, I've had a little bit of discussion with the Water Resource Board, nothing formally, but typically in mining applications, any type of rain or stormwater that hits a facility has to be contained on that facility, tested before it can be discharged. So my thought process is a lot of this is going to be similar to mining permits. We're not actually going to be the mining part, but we'll be in the processing part. And as I'm thinking about this, he did mention that the, it's not in the final stage. Once it's through this process, it would still have to go to a battery or e-manufacturing plant. And then Tesla would be using this nickel in their, in their cars. So there's not, that he was aware of a location where they would be shipping for the manufacturing of the batteries. But that could also be a secondary industry located here if, if there's a possibility. It could actually be the production of batteries as well. But nothing to that possibility has been talked about at this point. So. Any other questions? If not, I'd like to take a recess until ten-thirty and then we'll have next era energy give us their project update. So we'll stand recessed until ten-thirty.
Yeah.
Wayne, are you giving out door prizes for everybody that signs in?
Yeah, I understand. There's some, uh, look there, it's laying over here on.
Oh, those little candies?
X-words.
The X-words.
You did a statement if you were there, right?
That's right.
Gene's the one that's late.
Uh huh.
I might have to nail that off.
You're close. It's going to be exciting. I had enough years learning about it. There you go. Bring it over. There she is.
Ready, Quinn? Okay. I'll call the meeting back to order. Next on the agenda, we have Next Era Energy. You guys want to come up forward? Sure.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Seems like yesterday I was just here.
Yeah. Was it this warm outside the last time you were here?
I'm sorry?
Was it this warm outside the last time you were here?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
It was back in the spring, I believe. So my name is Clay Cameron. I'm with Next Era Energy on the development side. I want to introduce my colleague, Sarah Montone. She's been working very closely in North Dakota, looking at well and everything in North Dakota, so she's going to, you know, you'll see more of her as, as we go forward. I just, just for the record, I want to mention projects. So I think you guys are aware that we used to have a project located in Mercer County. It was called Garrison Butte. We no longer have that project.
Okay.
And it's pretty much, I think we're letting all the land leases expire. We're not moving forward with development. So just, that's, we do, you may be also aware that we do have two wind projects located in Oliver County that we've been developing for several years now. One is called the Red Butte Wind Project and the other was called the Oliver Four Wind Project. Hundred percent located in, the, the wind project itself is hundred percent located in Oliver County. So those projects have been under development for, gosh, six years now.
Okay.
We continue to push those along. What I wanted to show you on a map, and I apologize again, we do have a transmission line located from those projects to, you know, on the map, it doesn't show the boundary of those projects, but it does show a little red line. And those project, there is about seven miles located in Mercer County of transmission that interconnects into the Leland Old Substation, which is Basin owned, as you well know. We do have two fully executed generation interconnecting agreements into Leland Old's two, 200 megawatt, fully executed from SPP that we executed a couple of years ago, I think. So we can, and I think you're well aware also that I think Basin is constructing now a substation just south of Leland Olds for one of our interconnections as well. I think it's a mile south of the Leland Old Substation. So both of our projects will, one, the 200 megawatts will connect directly into Leland Olds, the other one will connect into that substation that they're currently building under construction. So we anticipate one of the projects going commercial operation in 2024 potentially, and the other one, commercial operation in 2025, right? Both of those projects, we're working on some commercial terms with potential customers. Can't really give you any update on those because those are confidential. We can, the land for both of those projects is pretty much a hundred percent secured along with the transmission line route that you see on the map is almost, is pretty much a hundred percent secured as well, the land on our private easements. There's two miles of transmission line that goes into the Leland Olds facility that's owned by Great River Energy and Basin as well, and we're working with securing those easements as well. What else did I forget? So I'll pause there if you have any questions. I know we haven't started any permitting at the state level, obviously, on these projects yet. We plan on submitting our public service application for one of the 200-megawatt projects late summer of this next 2023 to, to secure a 2024 commercial operation date. And then with the following 200-megawatt project, we'll probably submit it a year later, so summer of 2024 potentially, so. And obviously, whatever conditional use permit is required in Mercer County, Sarah's probably going to be working heavily on that as well with you guys. We won't probably start that process until sometime in the spring or summer of 2023.
Okay.
And this is just in regards to the transmission line?
I'm sorry?
Right? This is just in regards to the transmission lines?
Just the transmission line only.
Okay.
Yep. That's the only thing located in Mercer County, about seven miles. And we do plan on going in front of the Planning and Zoning Board. I think the next meeting is in January, so we'll update those, that board as well, and then we'll update you guys on a regular basis as we move forward.
Yeah, I think they actually have one on the 15th of this month and then the next one.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't make that. I'd have to be in my corporate office in Florida that week, but I told Cindy we'll schedule something in January.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions from the commission?
This, this trans, this transmission line, is, you're going to start construction on this or is it constructed? I could quite hear you.
I'm sorry?
Has the construction started on the transmission?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay.
No. We would not start construction on anything until we get fully permitted.
These are just preliminary words.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know you were talking about with Leland Olds and stuff, I didn't know if you had started on it.
Correct.
Okay. Well, thanks for the update.
Yeah, we appreciate the update.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is a new commission. This is our first meeting. So at some point in this meeting, we're going to reassign portfolios, probably towards the end, after we get most of our business done. So two of these faces will be on the Planning and Zoning Board when you, when you come in January.
Understood. Thank you for the time and happy holidays and we'll see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
Travis, when are they, when are they going to speak to the planning zoning?
The January meeting.
January.
Yep. Let's see. Got a few minutes until the next topic. Okay. We have an applicant for the Water Resource Board. Should be in our packet here. We have a, see, on the Water Resource Board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Gene to approve Kayleen Klein?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion on that? I was just going to say the Water Resource Board has one opening.
And that's not specific area? It can be?
Yeah, there's no districts or anything like that. It's all at large. So that appointment would be for three years, so it would be through '25.
And there's no conflict with her being on the Southwest Water thing?
Yeah, Water Resource Board is like stormwater, rivers, things like that. The Southwest Water Board is potable water, so shouldn't be any conflict on that. Any further discussion on appointing Kayleen to the Water Resource Board? Seeing none? Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Let's talk about the foreclosed properties, clear taxes, and offer to cities. Who needs to be here for that?
I can go get it because he asked me to be here.
Okay.
Okay.
I suppose because we didn't have it on the table.
We have four properties, right?
Do you remember how many?
One in Beulah, two in Zap, and one in Stanton.
One in Beulah, two in Zap, one in Stanton. Okay.
Well, we're waiting for Jim to come here. Do we have numbers on the sheriff's fees and recorder fees?
I can have them.
I know it's been a while since we accepted those.
Yeah. July, we had $29,794.98 for the sheriff's fees. I'll just put on the sheriff's fees first. August was $28,012.54. September was $25,489. October is $27,220. And November was $24,871.90. Recorder fees on July was $6,537.80. August, $5,964. September, $6,682.60. October is $4,145.70. And November was $4,576.90.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the sheriff and recorder fees for July through November?
So moved.
Motion by Gene, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion?
They're just per read by Gwen, correct?
Yes.
Put them out.
Yeah. Those will get put in the minutes. Gwen should have them since she gave them to us. Just for new commissioners, basically, the sheriff and the recorder, they collect fees from various things, recorders, like recording deeds and plats and research stuff, and sheriff's fees are, sheriff's fees, right?
A little of everything.
A little of everything. So any other discussion? Seeing none? Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Okay, let's go back to the foreclosed properties. So we had the auction. There was nine original properties. There's four left, right?
There's four left, yes.
Okay. And basically, we, we would clear the county taxes on there and then if there's any specials, that's why we offer it back to the cities.
Correct.
For a dollar.
For a dollar. And then they have the right to accept or reject. And if they accept it, then we do a county deed to the cities and then it becomes the city's property again.
Correct.
So do we have to do them individually or can we just do them?
Individually.
Individually, for each city?
Individually to each city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And there was one property in Beulah?
Correct.
You want to read the, just the legal on it? Yeah.
It was Lot 9, Block 6 of Prairie Hills Edition, filing number two.
Okay. Is there a motion to clear the taxes on that and offer it back to the city of Beulah for a dollar?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Gene, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion?
They're just per read by Gwen, correct?
Yes.
Put them out.
Yeah. Those will get put in the minutes. Gwen should have them since she gave them to us. Just for new commissioners, basically, the sheriff and the recorder, they collect fees from various things, recorders, like recording deeds and plats and research stuff, and sheriff's fees are, sheriff's fees, right?
A little of everything.
A little of everything. So any other discussion? Seeing none? Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Okay, let's go back to the foreclosed properties. So we had the auction. There was nine original properties. There's four left, right?
There's four left, yes.
Okay. And basically, we, we would clear the county taxes on there and then if there's any specials, that's why we offer it back to the cities.
Correct.
For a dollar.
For a dollar. And then they have the right to accept or reject. And if they accept it, then we do a county deed to the cities and then it becomes the city's property again.
Correct.
So do we have to do them individually or can we just do them?
Individually.
Individually, for each city?
Individually to each city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And there was one property in Beulah?
Correct.
You want to read the, just the legal on it? Yeah.
It was Lot 9, Block 6 of Prairie Hills Edition, filing number two.
Okay. Is there a motion to clear the taxes on that and offer it back to the city of Beulah for a dollar?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Gene, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none? Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Okay, let's go back to the foreclosed properties. So we had the auction. There was nine original properties. There's four left, right?
There's four left, yes.
Okay. And basically, we, we would clear the county taxes on there and then if there's any specials, that's why we offer it back to the cities.
Correct.
For a dollar.
For a dollar. And then they have the right to accept or reject. And if they accept it, then we do a county deed to the cities and then it becomes the city's property again.
Correct.
So do we have to do them individually or can we just do them?
Individually.
Individually, for each city?
Individually to each city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And there was one property in Beulah?
Correct.
You want to read the, just the legal on it? Yeah.
It was Lot 9, Block 6 of Prairie Hills Edition, filing number two.
Okay. Is there a motion to clear the county taxes and offer the property back to the city for a dollar per property?
I saw.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion? Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes.
The next one is in the city of Stanton and it's the south 85 feet of Lots 5 and 6, Block 15.
Okay. Is there a motion to clear the taxes on that and offer that property back to the city of Stanton for a dollar?
I'll make that motion again.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes.
The next one is in the city of Stanton and it's the south 85 feet of Lots 5 and 6, Block 15.
Okay. Is there a motion to clear the taxes on that and offer that property back to the city of Stanton for a dollar?
I'll make that motion again.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
And we do plan on going in front of the Planning and Zoning Board. I think the next meeting is in January. So we'll update those, that board as well. And then we'll update you guys on a regular basis as we move forward.
Yeah, I think they actually have one on the fifteenth of this month and then the next one.
Unfortunately, I can't make that. I'd have to be in my corporate office in Florida that week. But I told Cindy we'll schedule something in January.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions from the commission?
This, uh, this transmission line, is, you're gonna start construction on this or is it constructed? I could quite hear you.
I'm sorry?
Has the construction started on the transmission?
Oh, no, 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 no. We would not start construction on anything until we get fully permitted.
These are just preliminary words.
Yes, sir.
I know what you're talking about with, we don't know if the stuff I did not get started on.
Correct.
Okay. Well, thanks for the update.
Yeah, we appreciate the update.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is a new commission. This is our first meeting. So at some point in this meeting, we're gonna reassign portfolios, probably towards the end, after we get most of our business done. So two of these faces will be on the Planning and Zoning Board when you come in January.
Understood. Thank you for the time and happy holidays and we'll see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
Travis, when are they, when are they gonna speak to the Planning and Zoning?
The January meeting.
January.
Yep. Oh, let's see. Got a few minutes until the next topic. Okay, we have an applicant for the Water Resource Board. Should be in our packet here.
Thank you.
We have a, see, on the Water Resource Board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jean to approve, Kayleen Klein?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion on that? I was just gonna say the Water Resource Board has one opening.
And that's not specific area?
Yeah, there's no districts or anything like that. It's all at large. So that appointment would be for three years, so it would be through twenty-five.
And there's no conflict with her being on the Southwest Water thing?
Yeah, Water Resource Board is like storm water, rivers, things like that. Southwest Water Board is potable waters, so shouldn't be any conflict on that. Any further discussion on appointing Kayleen to the Water Resource Board? Seeing none. Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Let's talk about the foreclosed properties, clear taxes, and offer to cities. Who needs to be here for that? Okay.
I can go get it, 'cause he asked me to be here.
Okay.
Okay.
I suppose, 'cause we didn't have it on the table.
Four properties, right?
Do you remember how many?
Four. One in Beulah, two in Zap, and one in Stanton.
One in Beulah, two in Zap, one in Stanton.
Well, we're waiting for Jim to come here. Do we have numbers on the sheriff's fees and recorder fees?
I can have them.
I know it's been a while since we accepted those.
Yeah, um, July, we had twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents for the sheriff's fees. I'll just put on the sheriff's fees first. August was twenty-eight thousand, twelve dollars and fifty-four cents. September was twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine. October is twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty cents. And November was twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety cents. Recorder's fees on July was six thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents. August, five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four. September, six thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty cents. October is four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy cents. And November was four thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the sheriff and recorder fees for July through November?
So moved.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion?
They're just per read by Gwen, correct?
Yes. Yeah, those will get put in the minutes. Gwen should have them, since she gave them to us. Just for new commissioners, basically, the sheriff and the recorder, they collect fees from various things. Recorders, like recording deeds and plats and research stuff. And sheriff's fees are, sheriff's fees, right?
A little of everything.
A little of everything. So, any other discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Okay, let's go back to the foreclosed properties. So we had the auction. There was nine original properties. There's four left, right?
There's four left, yes.
Okay, and basically, we, we would clear the county taxes on there. And then if there's any specials, that's why we offer it back to the cities.
Correct.
For a dollar.
For a dollar. And then they have the right to accept or reject. And if they accept it, then we do a county deed to the cities. And then it becomes the city's property again.
Correct.
So, do we have to do them individually, or can we just do them? Individually, for each city?
Offered to each city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and there was one property in Beulah?
Correct.
You wanna read the, just the legal on it?
It was Lot Nine, Block Six of Prairie Hills Edition, filing number two.
Okay. Is there a motion to clear the taxes on that and offer it back to the city of Beulah? For a dollar?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes.
What's the, what do you have for Zap? Next ones are in Zap. The first one's east eighty feet of Lots One, Two, Three, in Block Two. And the other one is Lot Six. And the west twenty feet of Lot Five, Block Three, in the Wild Edition.
Okay. Is there a motion to clear the county taxes and offer the property back to the city for a dollar per property?
I saw.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Rick? Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes.
The next one is in the city of Stanton. And it's the south eighty-five feet of Lots Five and Six, Block Fifteen.
Okay. Is there a motion to clear the taxes on that and offer that property back to the city of Stanton for a dollar? Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Rick? Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. And that should conclude all the foreclosed ones. Okay. All right, next topic, landfill rates.
Well, I sent you guys a letter. It's in here in the hat. Could you read it? Yep, on what I'd like to change. Does anybody have anything on the changes on there?
Did you get your question answered about the mixed loads?
Yes.
Yeah?
I caught Candy during our recess.
Okay.
And asked her a couple of questions.
And, and we don't distinguish between municipal waste and the inert, right? We do it all the same?
All the same across the board, yeah. And with the appliances that were twenty there? I just, I was looking up information and the transfer station in Beulah is charging twenty-five for freon, white ware. And they got twenty-five for it and dumped it for twenty for me over a hundred units this summer. And this was effective in twenty-two of January. So they made about five hundred bucks and didn't have to suck the freon out. So that's my reasoning for that one.
Mm-hmm.
Understandable.
And the gas stations in that charge more for tires. When you buy tires, you have to pay the disposal fee or take them and...
Do you feel like this is gonna be enough to adjust them to this amount? Candy, I know that we've gone back and forth quote a few times because it seems like a lot of other areas charge substantially amount more, you know? But I just wanna make sure that we're covering you and the needs that you have there at the landfill.
Well, I believe this is going to help.
Yeah, I would add on to what Liza just asked by stating that do, what do other, I mean, uh, if other places charge? I, and I have no idea what other landfills charge for tire, if they even allow them. And if they're charging like...
Yeah, I believe most of them take them. Like the city of Beulah doesn't actually bring ours to them. They have to pay to take them out of there. I just had a guy call me, but it would cost me more than I'm charging for the tires to haul them. That's why we bury them. And we are allowed to bury them. And then that's, well, that's just car tires. We, you know, the tires, the bigger they get, they're ten dollars for a stunt my tire. Twenty-five for a tractor tire. You get into loader tires, they're fifty bucks. Depends on the size of the tire.
And how, is there a limit to how many you can accept?
Nope, because we don't, we bury them. There used to be a limit on them when you had them in piles. You can only have like seven hundred in each pile. Because of fires, which is kinda silly, but whatever. But it doesn't matter.
I chuckle, 'cause only seven hundred.
Yeah, only.
Yeah, 'cause all it does is mosquitoes and animals. If you have them on top of the ground, so.
Right, well, and I mean, the comment about Beulah and the transfer station, I mean, they'll probably increase their rates just because they have costs associated with manning the station and bringing them and stuff like that, so. But, cost or cost. I mean, if this is what we need to make the facility viable, I can be in support of that. One of Jean's questions, just doing like a random Google search. I've seen landfills in the state range from that mid-forty-dollar range to the upper forty-dollar range per ton. So we're, with this, with this increase, we're about the median, about the average in, in the western part of the state, so.
Yeah.
So we're not out of line, is what I'm getting at.
No, and then, I don't know. Well, the fuel cost this year really hurt. The last time ever it went over.
Okay.
So, and I guess if you guys agree to this here, I will change our sheet and get it sent to everybody. The cities and everybody. It's just gonna go across the board. We're not gonna wait here or do anything because it just, we'll have to amend their budget, just like we have to.
Yeah, and with, like, we've talked a little bit about this, but the landfill for the county is an enterprise fund. Sanitation for municipalities is an enterprise fund, so they have the ability to change it 'cause it's based on a service. Or it's considered almost like a utility.
Yeah.
But, um, if there isn't any other questions, I would entertain a motion to accept the recommendation from the landfill for the rates to be effective January first.
So moved.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll give it to them. Rick? Okay, Rick, second to that. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie? All vote aye. That motion passes. You got new rates?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Candy.
All right, gotta find my rate page here. While we're waiting here for the eleven o'clock, people with existing portfolios, we can give an update. So let's start with Liza.
Yep, unfortunately, the shop furnace went out up there at the landfill. So Candy had to quickly get a new furnace in there before the weather got really bad. So, but she had planned to have that actually on her 2023 budget. And she did have some funding already in the system that could suck up part of that. So we thought about a thousand dollars would be something that she might be over on her budget. But we just wanna make sure you guys were aware of that. Just because of the fact that we had to get that in. There's no way you can wait for the shop furnace at all. But I think Candy did an excellent job of getting ahold of me and making sure she could get, I'm surprised I could get the parts to get the furnace fixed that quickly and get a whole new one put in. So she did a really good job on that.
And we haven't got an invoice yet for that, have we?
Nope, not yet.
So if we get the invoice after the first of the year?
Then we're golden.
We're golden.
Yep.
I was gonna mention to you guys too, when he was out there, according to him, your shops that hold your plates and stuff have the exact same furnace that I thought. And they are probably just as old as the one I had. You can't get parts for them, so that might be something in the future you might wanna look at. 'Cause if they quit on you, they're gonna have to do the same thing I just did.
Okay.
He just brought that up to me and I said I would mention it to you guys.
Thank you. Yeah.
Anything else like that?
And then on the ambulance, there will be no December meeting for the ambulance. And we have decided to change the date of that meeting so that we can get some more of our board members able to be there, just due to their other conflicts with others. So it'll be the third Tuesday now will be the ambulance meeting. And then we had a LEPC meeting just yesterday. And Carmen completed everything for the mitigation management form. And then our next meeting will be in March. And we discussed what our next steps will be as far as any, I don't know if you call them drills? Or, what do we call those again, Carmen?
Exercises.
Exercises, that's it. Yeah.
Everything's got its own term, right?
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Jean, any updates?
No, not much. I got, there's actually a Mercer County Economic Development meeting Monday night. Not too much. There may be some news on clerk of court coming up. I don't, I'll find out. There was a phone call today. Wanda will let me know. The State's Attorney Insurance Department, everything seems to be going okay. So other than that, no.
The clerk of court, that's the one where the state's reviewing how they're gonna?
Yes.
Handle that? Is that gonna be at the legislative session, or is that?
It's probably gonna be brought up during the session, yes.
Okay, so, that, that could be a couple of months before we kinda know what direction that's going?
There might, there may be some changes in a few months, yes.
All right, as far as my portfolios, we had a library board meeting Tuesday. Basically, they kinda went through their end of year stuff. The, based on what the funding they got, they enacted their pay raises for library staff that will go effective the first of the year. The next library board meeting will be in, last Monday in February. As far as the library board goes, I brought this up in a previous meeting, but the library board is the only board that we have that we don't pay the board members for attendance. McLean County pays the library board members forty-five dollars a meeting. We do reimburse mileage, so does McLean County. But I would like to see us compensate the library board at the same rate that McLean County does for their members. And just for everybody's knowledge, the library board is a joint endeavor between Mercer and McLean County. It's a regional library. And that library in Riverdale is kind of the main hub. Beulah, Hazen, several cities like Washburn, Max, Garrison, Underwood, they all have libraries. And essentially, the Riverdale one is the central hub. So with that comment, I would move that Mercer County pays the board members for the library board the forty-five, excuse me, forty-five dollars per meeting effective after the first of the year. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, second by Jean. Any discussion?
Do we pay other boards?
Yeah, my question is, one is this one, the fair board also. I mean, you're looking at boards.
Well, so when you look at boards, the Planning and Zoning Board gets paid. Uh, the weed board gets paid. Your question on the fair board, that's a non-for-profit entity.
Okay.
I guess... Wayne, do you know if the airport board gets paid?
Nope.
Nope?
Mileage.
Mileage? Okay, then I was informed incorrectly, but however... Yeah, and, and basically, I was told at the library board that they were the only one that didn't get paid. And I hadn't researched to see if the other boards got paid or not. But I, but the weed board does. And I know the Water Resource Board does. So, basically, if we do this, then we may have to look at other ones as well. But they're essential boards.
The ambulance board, I don't know. 'Cause I have not ever seen.
So maybe I opened a can of worms, but it is what it is. Thanks for your answer, Wayne. Discussion from the board. Any other discussion? All vote aye. Jean?
Nay.
Liza?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
Rick?
I'm gonna vote nay.
Okay, that motion fails. Moving on, now it's eleven o'clock. We'll talk about the EM nine-one-one position. Carmen, if you wanna come up?
Yep, and Terry and I, I want Terry to come up with me, if that's okay.
Yep.
What, what I did is I went through, and this is for information. I want you guys to look at what these jobs entail. Because my concern is, the nine-one-one is tied so closely to the dispatch. And initially, when I was hired, Sheriff Kessler was part of my hiring. He's the one that told the commission at that time, he did not, he wanted me under the mission, not under the ship. So today is more of a discussion, we're doing any motions? Well, anyway, I'm gonna give you my opinion. So I feel, and Terry agrees, that he should be part of the discussion.
Should we ask Carmen to go over the mic?
And what we've come to, to use on my...
We can all hear you, Carmen, but we want it on the recording.
Anyway, I mean, I train the dispatch. The dispatchers we hire, if they don't get this training, they can't sit up there. I do the Q and A. I work with them on every aspect of the dispatch. We need somebody that can work with that sheriff's office and work with that dispatch. So that's why, when Terry and I discussed it, he is willing, if you guys would allow it, to allow this position to be absorbed into the sheriff's office. And then, okay, so from this information too, I want you to know, I've talked to both LEPCs. I've talked to the Oliver Commission. I had a meeting with them yesterday regarding this issue. And I know they really don't have a problem with this, as long as our, you know, we'll look on the billing. But if we did this and like Terry didn't want the EM under his, so then we'd look at the EM portion as possibly part-time. But the thing with Oliver, and I know with this county too, we wanna make sure we keep that. If we do a part-time EM, we wanna keep it within the budget. So I also did some numbers on the EM part, if we considered it. And I would say four days a week. So I'm looking, this information is looking at my budget that I've got for that side of it. And at thirty-two hours, twenty-four hours. So I know I'm telling a lot of stuff, but we're not giving any to the orders office. These guys have to decide what they wanna do. And then once we decide, then we'll put out, you know, what we need to do to put the job up. So this is just EM separated out and all kind of the figures. And Terry, I just, not that you can't. So, okay, so if you're looking at the EM side of it, we wouldn't hire this side until the first of April. 'Cause right now, my concern is nine-one-one. I need, what I'd like to do is have Terry absorb that in as of the first of the year so that I can start training Rona Shute, who is a senior dispatcher. She's been there twenty-plus years. She's the one I need to start with. And I need to get her to know that database, not only how to update it, but how to edit it, put new roads, put new locations, things like that. I would love to have her a full January, full-time. Right now, she's been working with that database with me just a couple hours out of the week. And we've gotten a lot of stuff done. But, you know, she's got her own full-time job going on. She gets no compensation for it. She's just been amazing. Plus, I also have Marcio over at Beulah PD putting in Beulah information, which has been working out really good too. But Rona's the one I want to take full-time and get her working on learning that. Plus, we have the Siren coming up. And that's a big change for that dispatch. And Rona's the one that I need to work with in getting those dispatchers ready for this change. And that would be the other thing I wanna work with her on. So about January, February, and March, to do that training. And then even after a month, talk with Terry, whatever he wants to do, however we wanna train it. That reverse nine-one-one system, twenty-four hour, that should be in the dispatch. Every dispatcher should know how to do that, so whenever that's needed, boom, we got it done. You know, things like that, it can be easily absorbed into the sheriff's office.
So where would the monies come from for compensation for that person to take on those extra duties in the sheriff's department?
The nine-one-one funds specifically designated for that. That's what she would use.
That's what would go under Terry's budget then?
Yes, that would go under Terry's budget. But just like Terry's budget, every, he's got different things. This nine-one-one fees have to be used specifically for nine-one-one equipment, for the nine-one coordinator wage, you know, things like that. And that wouldn't change, it would just be under the sheriff's office.
Here's my stance on that. The PSAP is, for the most part, controlled by the sheriff's department. The equipment is there, it's public service answering point. Simple. The employees are shared that do the nine-one-one or answer the calls that run the PSAP are shared with the jail. So you can see that our dispatcher and our jail are intertwined. In some places, your PSAP is separate. In some places, your PSAP is separate from your jail, separate from your sheriff's department. We have the unique ability here. They should have probably, going forward, like you say, Ron didn't want it. And it should have been under the purview of the sheriff's department way back then. It's a very good fit. I'm the one, if a call goes wrong and you don't get service, who is going to take the responsibility in that building over there? Does the public think the nine-one-one coordinator did that? It's the sheriff's department and dispatch, they're my employees. So I would like to have control over what I'm taking the responsibility for anyway. Right now, I don't. And there's other issues. Carmen should have had a life a long time ago. We shouldn't have been in a major emergency, say, reverse nine-one-one. How are we, you know, if your phone went dead, we were in trouble. How are we doing that? We need to build some redundancy into the system and make that work. So whether it's I or the chief of police of Hazen or Beulah, if they need nine-one-one upon senior leadership's command, we can do reverse nine-one-one up at that office without trying to find Carmen.
With that nine-one-one dispatch, you have to use it every month, so every dispatcher is going to be trained and continue.
I have six certified instructors in my department now that can pick up that EMD course. Now, I'm not saying in the future, you know, you were talking about Rona, we diverge a little bit in our thoughts there, but the mapping and stuff needs to be trained with someone, but who I'm gonna send out to, yes, to work with the fire departments and the ambulances and stuff, maybe someone, someone different. I can, I can move them abilities and their responsibilities within the department to, you know, to where I feel they're served best. Like I say, I'm ultimately responsible, for the most part, for it anyway. The equipment is all located, well, besides what the ambulances have, and the fire departments are in my building, the sheriff's department. So this is, in my opinion, is just a very good fit. Now, my problem with emergency management is historically in Mercer County, declared disasters or floods. I think it would be doing the county a disservice to keep that within my department, when if you've got a long-term, two-week flood, or three-week, or a month-long flood going on, the sheriff shouldn't be distracted trying to line up, say, engineers and motor graders to stop certain issues that the cities might be facing. I need to have my focus yet on public safety, rescues, road closures, incidents like that. Typically, if there is a big incident in, within a community, that opens the opportunity for someone that is a bad actor to try to take advantage of that. The sheriff can't lose sight of my mission either. Our mission, the mission as emergency manager completely splits from the sheriff's department's mission in situations like that. So I know it creates a mess, dealing with different employees. You know, instead of one, we'd have two, and I'd have one. Our other option was, is, you know, and ultimately too, the position of emergency management, historically has been a tool, too, for the county commission to be able to track what it's going to cost the county in their budgetary fiscal concerns, and to work with him directly, and to try to bring federal and state and county resources together to minimize the cost in a disaster. I can't, you know, my office wouldn't have time to be doing, taking care of issues like that. In the same respect, if someone's working for me as my nine-one-one coordinator, but all of a sudden I need them, and all their time is being consumed by you guys, there's our, you know, inherent conflict coming, and I don't want to do that, because you probably know how to push hard, but so do I, so where do we meet in the middle? I don't, I don't want to put some poor employee in the middle of that. So I think it's a best of a split. I know budgetary, you're going maybe trying to find one and a half, or how do you do that? People only come, you know, in once, otherwise this would be an easy decision. I think, you think, if this is what you decide to do, I'm willing to, I'm willing to take that on. And me and Carmen, I think, going forward, like you say, if you give her the opportunity to, yeah, to get someone trained in the mapping and the updating, that's absolutely, yeah, start, start with one person right there. I'll make it work, we'll communicate back and forth, we'll make this work. But going forward, like I say, I would like to see them positions split somehow. And then, of course, then you have your other budgetary concerns. I think it would be a better fit personally, and easier for the county, is if we looked at what it's costing us to keep, or for Oliver County to keep our PSAP and to keep them running. Because not only are we, for the most part, through PSAP, you know, we're handling a lot of the duties on our end that would be taken by staff down there. Some of the calls that wouldn't even come into a PSAP for Oliver County come through us, and we get them to the right people down there. So, but a flat fee to charge Oliver County would be, would be a better fit. Come up with a number, forty, whatever you said for it, it's probably somewhere around there, thousand dollars, to offset what it's costing us. And then, of course, we get, being their PSAP, we get that telephone money for nine-one-one services and stuff, for equipment and stuff that has to, like Carmen said, has to be used for that purpose. Anyway, so, that would be a good fit. Problem for you guys, but my, my other option is, is if you don't want to do that, that personally, it'd be easier for me to, to say, you know, keep doing what we're doing. But going forward, when there's a problem, you know, I got to get to where the public understands that that nine-one-one coordinator is a separate position from the sheriff's department. And if they have a problem, to call the right person with their problem to get it fixed. And ultimately, that would be on you guys to then, to take responsibility if things do go wrong in that dispatch center. That's going to be your baby, not mine, if you choose to do that, your choice. I think it's a better fit for me. I'm, I'm taking the responsibility for it anyway. I'm doing the, I'm going to be doing the hiring and firing, the rewarding, the discipline anyway. I do that already for the individuals that she trains.
So normally, I would say this is a curveball, but it sounds more like a knuckleball, because I don't know which way it's going to turn.
I don't, yeah, your guys is ball, but that's my thoughts on that. I like, like Carmen said, she initially, and kudos to her, took on that entire responsibility for nine-one-one. It used to be, I remember when this happened, when you had an emergency, you could dial seven-four-five-three-three-three-two. That was your PSAP. And when we went to nine-one-one, that was huge for the county, and it was a big change. And he didn't want that responsibility, for whatever reason, you know, that was way back in the history.
They didn't even know what it entailed.
We didn't even know what it entailed. So, yeah, as, as a public official, sometimes if you don't know what it is, you don't want it. And he didn't want it, and Carmen, and Carmen took it. It would have been a better fit way back then, and some of the communication issues we've had would have been easier to resolve.
And I'm not disagreeing with anything that you have said, but I'd like it written down, like what you think each position would entail, and kind of what we've done in other departments, you know. Maybe we have that individual, but additional duties would be an additional compensation. As far as, the biggest wrinkle to me is, is the tracking to, for Oliver County. But if it was a set fee, I mean, it'd be what it was. It'd be a lot simpler.
And that's what I, I talked to the Oliver Commission about that, and they are agreeable on a set. Just like we do with the dispatch, you get your forty thousand for dispatch. Well, the nine-one-one portion of it is separate too, and I have records showing what the average cost is, and that's what they were agreeable to as an average. We have a five-year agreement. And then every five years, we can look at it again, and if it seems to have gone up, then that's our opportunity at that point to go up along with the dispatch. And that's what we've been doing throughout the last twenty-seven, twenty-six years. It was a couple of years after that.
But I had Samantha kind of look at how other counties and other, and it, it's a, there's no consistency. Sometimes it's one person, sometimes it's different individuals, sometimes it's, you know, and the flood, the flood thing you talked about.
With the size of the county.
Correct.
How they can get away with that.
Right, and some of them are joint, some of them have components from the city. So, the one comment with the floodplain, you know, that takes a certain individual that's got to go through courses and stuff like that. And when you mentioned that, it's typically.
Floodplain manager?
Yeah.
City is our floodplain manager.
Okay.
I am Oliver's floodplain manager, but that position will go back to their tax assessor. That's not something that is in this description.
Okay, so that would be removed?
That is, no, that don't exist here. He is strictly nine-one-one database, dispatch.
Manager just is not a good fit in a, in a department our size, which is, in my opinion. Because like I say, Beulah has its own issues, Hazen has its own issues. How can we, as a department, take our eye off the entire county to help deal, to coordinate with the state and local and federal officials while there's an emergency going on, but, but keep public safety in mind for the rest of the county? That's my issue with.
And technically, it would always be a separate post, and we have to be.
Since Jerry's here, what does Hazen use for the floodplain? Do you have somebody on staff, or is it?
Monty or her.
Monty, okay. Yeah, Beulah uses Interstate.
Interstate for a while.
Yeah. So, you know.
And our other issues, I think, I believe the work is there, once you're combining with Oliver too, that, you know, the senior dispatcher and my existing staff can take care of the training matters. But you're going to need someone that goes out, and Carmen does, goes out, meets with the ambulances, meets with the fire departments, helps them train, shows them how to use the software and the mapping, tries to keep their equipment working. That's, that's a full-time job, nine-one-one coordinator. It should have been probably, when, when it started getting more complicated and the state started putting more rules on nine-one-one and emergency management.
We've got a state map that needs to be, I got a whole nother map that needs to be updated. Then we have our, our in-house database, that's where all the work comes from. And everybody uses our in-house database. Addressing, post office, every entity in this county. I can't even create maps, which aren't even in this description. I just do that because there was a void and I filled it, and I could. But the mapping has never been in my job description, I've never been paid for it. You know what I mean? I'm paid for nine-one coordinator, but that database, to keep that up within the sheriff's office and the emergency, I truly believe it is two people. And I don't want to dump this on somebody, because honestly, it's just, there's so much other stuff I wanted to do better, but I didn't have time. And honestly, three years ago, I was getting rid of that in-house data. When that vesta came in last fall, I mean, it was last fall we got it, I was going to get rid of that nine-state map in there, but they had some issues, and then all of a sudden, the dispatcher's like, you ain't getting rid of, and then I got interest from you and from Beulah PD, and I got Liza. So I got a commissioner, and I've got two police departments. So then that made me rethink that, and then I got some help. But nobody got paid for that help, but still, it, it's, it's very important, and those of you, I just don't think people understand how much people use that map. Because when I was, got the word out, I even had the postmaster saying, you can't get rid of that, because it just helps us. When I do addressing and they got to figure things out, it's just, you know, it works. There's just a lot of entities within the county that uses the information that we have.
And again, we, we have other resources that we're not prepared to utilize as well as we could, just because you have, you know, a point of contact is one person. And it shouldn't be like our reverse nine-one-one, stuff like that. That we have to fix some of them issues. We have the capability to do this, but God forbid, and nothing on wood, something happens to you, or, or something, you know, and Murphy's Law, that's when you'll have an emergency, you need to, an hydrant spill or whatever on ten below, and you have to have everybody stay in standing shelter in place. I need to reverse nine-one-one that, but Carmen broke her leg and she's on her way to the ER at Bismarck, what do I do? Your public, we have the ability to do it, I have to tell them we couldn't do it, because we didn't have the appropriate personnel there. Who are they going to blame again, though? The sheriff's department, that's why I think it's a better fit to be under my purview, because I'm going to, I'm going to take the responsibility for it anyway.
So Oliver County was on board?
They were on board, as long as we stay within the budget, they're good. But now, you asked for a description, so you want Terry to give you a description of how the nine-one's going to fit into his office? Is that what you're asking? Because what I handed out was a description of, the nine-one is separated out from the EM. So you can look at the nine-one side and what's responsible, and then look under the EM and see what's responsible.
Well, and here's my question too. So then, in the sheriff's department, it would just be an added to one of your senior dispatchers? So we wouldn't have to consider like benefits and such?
No, I would need, I would need a, a full-time employee added to the department.
Okay, so that's where I was confused on this, so.
Now, some of them did, like I say, and even with that, some of the duties that she's been doing, I could farm out to different responsibilities, my MOI instructors and stuff. Once you get them, they're general subjects, once you get them certified with the EMD, then they can teach that to other people. So even if I have my nine-one-one coordinator slash senior dispatcher is sick, that the training still goes on.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, that.
So we're actually talking about two separate individual positions where we would need benefits for both those positions?
For you guys, yes. For emergency management, whatever you guys wanted to do there, but then for the nine-one-one coordinator on my side, whatever you wanted to do there. Or you can keep it the way it is, but I'm going to make sure the ball rolls in the right direction for that department then. It's either, you know, when, when things aren't working right or whatever, we're going to share some joint responsibility to get it fixed.
So you take on the nine-one-one in your department, and you designate someone for that?
Well, because someone's going to end up going out, Carmen does a lot of traveling. Someone's going to end up going down to center to, especially when new equipment comes on board, or mapping get changed, or updates. She goes down there and she checks that, or if they have a problem, train, helps train in mapping. The ambulance driver shows them how to use things, the GPS. Some of that is close coordination with the ambulance fire department.
Well, I heard you say dispatch slash nine-one-one. This wouldn't be separate and paid, would it?
As far as, well, pay scale.
Well, there wouldn't be separate compensation for this.
No, no, my, my, like my department, all, all our employees are, are, you know, jointly trained. My deputies now are correctional officers slash, well, most of them probably couldn't really do the paging because of the technology and the buttons and everything, but dispatchers, most of them started in the jail. But I would expect that, you know, a lot of them same duties, yeah, that my nine-one-one coordinator, she's going to be getting help from my instructors in the department. She's going to give me help if a dispatcher gets sick and I have a shift of them. That just makes sense for you guys, cost, cost-wise and everything else. I fill in for shifts on the road and get an unexpected vacation or sick leave or something else. We all have to be redundant, that's the way an organization or government works the best, when you do do that.
So, in my, being new, and I still understand this, it's like, a nine-one-one coordinator is getting paid. I mean, so we're, we're, if we're moving this, I mean, we're, we're can also be moving this income or expense or whatever to the, to the other side, just move it, we're not really, even by creating another job.
Yeah, no, the nine-one would.
We're just moving our.
Yes, budgetarily, now, if you do that, now, like I say, you're stuck with the emergency management side. Because you wouldn't be able to take that entire amount that she's getting paid for emergency manager and pay a full-time emergency manager.
You can't even legally do that. My budget is separated. I have a budget for nine-one, I have a budget for EM, but here's the thing, my wage is split. So you aren't getting a full.
Yeah, you have to diverge there.
But, nine-one-one does and always has paid all of my benefits. The general fund has not had to pay any of my EM benefits. So that's an expense that the general fund has to take on for the EM part of it. But you would already have money in the nine-one for the benefits of this other person. But it's the wage part of it that you have to look at and.
Hence, we have a.
And if you're also filling in for your side, that's right, you merge it.
And what you're talking about, Terry, is that you would want a full-time person, so you only have part-time money, wages coming over.
My staff by one.
So you would have to have full-time wages, actually.
But it would be paid for by nine-one-one, and that person, that money would be used for nine-one-one.
Not fully though, right, Carmen?
No, it wouldn't cover it fully though, so, yeah, there's that difference. Now, you still have the problem where you know, because emergency manager is just not a good fit for the department. And it wouldn't be fair to the county or the cities, in my opinion. So you guys can keep it the way it is, but you're asking a lot from that person, and Carmen can know, me and her have had long discussions. Sometimes they, you know, we're trying to meet at the middle, but she's got other, I, I understand that she's got other duties she's taking care of. I wanted, always wanted more of her time and effort and resources.
So redundancy and stuff as emergency manager, wouldn't a, a road man, a roads, highways department be a, if you're looking for that, is a place for emergency manager then, or not?
That, that I couldn't, I don't know what you're good fit with. You know, for an emergency manager, a lot of times, just someone that's very detail-oriented, with knowledge of fiscal matters and communication skills and even like a civil engineer.
What's that? Isn't there a lot of application for grants within that too?
Even a civil engineer would be a good.
Here's the thing, emergency manager is your disaster coordinator, so that does. Here's the thing, emergency manager is your disaster coordinator. So that does exercising. Across the counties exercising. They have to be able to communicate with all the responders, work with the responders and, and they have to understand.
It's a whole nother animal than what I'm thinking.
Oh, yeah, totally.
Right, yeah.
And, and work with our private entities, them big, them big industries or power plants, basin electric, uh, you know, all them. They, they, they have people that i- in a, in a disaster, you know, they have their own protocol to go through. We have to know that and we have to marry that. They have to know our capabilities and we have to marry them with, with theirs. That's part of your, your emergency manager.
And you have to know all the resources and gale.
And again, yeah, the sheriff is going to have, say that we have a critical incident at D G C. My goals are gonna be a lot different than the emergency manager goals and the goals of basin electric. They have goals too that include their stockholders or, or monetary people that have interest in it. I have none. My goal is for the public safety of Mercer County. And if they diverge, I know which way I'm gonna go to my sworn home. So there's your, again, inherent conflict. So that's not a good fit for the sheriff's department.
And, and the emergency manager is the one that gives you the state above our local resources. Once they're used up in a disaster, they get state resources coming in and, and eighty percent of the training on the emergency manager is done through the state. And that includes the grants, all the applications.
The emergency manager position is paid by, you said you're split. Where does that come from then?
Okay, my whole position is split with nine one funds for the nine one side and E M funds. Okay, I got an E M P G grant and we get it every year and everything is, half of everything I do in the E M side of it is paid by this E M P G grant. And the fact that we work with Oliver County, half of theirs that we do is paid, they pay us fully. So actually that whole position, half of it is paid by, Oliver takes half, we take half. And basically, general fund in the end only pays a quarter of that entire position because we work with Oliver County and we have that grant.
So, so in, in my take on this is like going back to what Travis said, is like, we need to go back to the drawing board and do a little more legwork. I mean, we got a good, good plan in place, but we gotta figure out how we can lay this all out here. Once we got it laid out, then we come in here and say, yes, that's where we're gonna do it or, or no, but we gotta have something a little bit more.
Okay, but that's what I tried to do for you.
Right, but I mean.
On this position, you have everything that the nine one does. Plus, you have everything that E M does. That's the one position. Okay, so if he takes it, he's taken everything that says on here about the nine one, that's what he's taken. Responsibility.
I, I'm not talking about that.
But the E M part of it, this is if we did a part-time E M, I separated out for cost and things. So beyond that, what do you need?
I wanna know how much Turnus needs to supplement the part-time to a full-time. That's what I wanna know.
You know, and then lay, and lay it all out where, I mean, we, you know, so we can just, you know, like we have the cost of a full-time or a part-time. We can lay it all out as where we can see, we'll add this, we'll put our nine one one into the sheriff's department, we'll add this one on this side. Where you can lay it all out where it's cut and dried and then we can, this is what we wanna do. You know, and what it's gonna cost us, you know, this grant is gonna pay for this, the county's gonna pay for part of it, so we all, we know exactly where we're gonna go there.
For the E M side of it, I've got it here.
But this, does this include benefits?
This is absolutely.
This has the benefits on it, even though the benefits, you said, go with the nine one one person?
Okay, they paid for everything. So I gave a break to the general fund. But I included on this E M side of it, even if we hire April through the end of the year for this budget, I included that on there, what those benefits would be. Then next year, looking at uh, the twenty twenty four budget for the E M, if we did part-time, twenty-four hours or twenty-four dollars an hour, I, I have that on there. Plus, I got the last couple of years of the budget for the E M and how we went over and why we went over. Because there were things that were unseen and I can go over that with you. The only thing we do is we need to work with you to find out how you're gonna incorporate the nine one side of it.
Well, and I think what you're looking for too with that spreadsheet is probably, you know, absolutely being a decision, but probably having our auditor take a look at this. Cause she knows what the benefits and stuff are. I mean, I can give you numbers roughly, but if you want figures that make sense, presented in a way that makes sense, our fiscal manager would probably be a better fit to have that type of talent. We could tell her what we want.
Okay, but you understand.
Have her work the numbers first. Yes, I'm an employee, I do.
That I've been doing this for twenty-seven years. I do the billings.
Yeah, but we're splitting it now.
And I do understand benefits and things.
No, I get that, yeah.
I would just wanna make sure that we get this done and promptly, is it, no, it's time.
Right.
I want time to train.
We understand that. And I'm just gonna say, thirty minutes, we've talked about this, twenty-eight of it, you've hardly taken a breath and you threw a lot at us.
I, I did, I did.
And we wanna do it right. So if you're asking for direction today, it's probably not gonna happen because we have to digest this and we need to know how it's gonna work budgetarily. And I'm not so much concerned about all the duties that have been done. I want them duties to be done. We just have to reassign the duties and know how that's gonna affect all these budgets.
And I would like to see that in my own budget. I.
Right, right.
I haven't. And I'm, I'm, I'm a numbers person, but not that much I, you know, that would have to be done by the auditors.
But, but that's the thing. I just hope you take the time, look at what I gave you. Cause I did try to be thorough, especially with the E M side. And now when it comes with the sheriff's office, I didn't have access, we didn't have time to talk about it. Like I said, when I came in though, this was a discussion. I'm not asking for any motion, but just soak it in. But now, you're asking for what we're gonna do with the nine one side of it. But I know what I've got here.
I'm asking what you're gonna do. So just letting you know again, we have time.
I don't think you're.
Of course, nothing's gonna stop magically if, if this don't get done right away.
But. And to be done correctly, you know, and I wanna make sure that we all fully understand what, what it's gonna mean for the budget too, basically.
I think we're, like I said, we're, I think we're all on board and, yeah, and we're, but it's just that we wanna do it right, you know?
And that's what I, I concur with Travis. You know, I don't think we can do it today.
No.
We, we, we're not, I'm pretty sure that we're not gonna push this off until March or April.
No.
No, no.
In your case where you're asking for a quick resolve, we'll come up with one, but boy, you threw a lot at us.
Okay, but I'm asking you, can you look at the E M side of it and then tell me what else you want to know about this? Because I know it, inside and out, every single.
The only thing that threw me off, Carmen.
I make copies of, I do billings, you name it, I know.
Right, the only thing that threw off, threw me off was when you said that your benefits get paid by the nine one one, which would be going over to Turnus.
Yes.
So then I wanted to make sure we had benefits covered for this E M. That's, that's the only thing that threw me off, cause I'm like, we need benefits, so.
Absolutely. But take a look at it and then we'll work with Sam or we'll work together. I just need to see your budget and decide how you're gonna work.
Yeah, well, I would need to see, have Sam take a look at that and see what I'm looking at too.
All right, we're all on, we're all on board.
So we'll put it on for the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, if we make sure we get it timed, we absolutely need it timed.
Yep.
Cause it's really hard, especially if Oliver wants to be involved, to let them come over, but we are not on a time. And we did get a time, but uh, not initially.
Right, so when, when does Oliver County usually meet?
Well, they got another meeting, I believe it's tw- it's after our.
I think they're Thursdays usually.
Okay, that's, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, once, but at the end of the year, they always have one right at the end of the month.
Okay.
Right before the end of the year, like the twenty-eighth or something. But I know when they said that, it was after your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Which normally we have a Wednesday meeting.
Right, yeah, our next one would be the twenty-first.
Our next meeting will be in Beulah, remember?
Yeah, at the museum.
And that's the thing, you know, like you said, you don't have to make a decision, whatever. It would just be nice if I had some time to train. But, you know, that's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. I think all we have left is reorganization. All right. Okay. Um, does everybody have a copy of the current?
Oh, fancy word there, current. I have a copy, I don't know if current.
Uh, I don't know if, was it in the package or not?
No, it's printed, it's just sitting.
Could we?
Well, can I just throw it out like this and say, Wayne had uh, West Central Human Services? Dakota Central Service, Airport, Weed, Planning and Zoning, Building and Grounds and Tax.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And that, that's gonna have, all those have to be spread among.
You're not just gonna sit in on those?
Sure.
All right.
So, so a- any question, uh, basically, just, I mean, ask me anything you wanna ask. Uh, the uh, 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 Social Services day meeting all the time over at Washburn, at the Hazen uh, ambulance, or at Washburn Ambulance Bay. But it's a day meeting all the time. Airport meeting is evening meeting. Uh, second Tuesday normally, it's, it's out there at the hangar. That's where they conduct their meeting. Uh, who else do I have?
Weed Board.
Oh, Weed Board, uh, usually Brad Seaford would call, uh, but it's, it's normally the second Thursday, that's held at Beulah, at the Beulah Civic Center normally, evening meeting. And of course, Planning and Zoning's the evening meeting, uh, held at Beulah at seven o'clock. And that's on the third, third Thursday and so is Social Services always on the third Thursday of the month.
And where's the Social Service meeting? Oh, it says different places, Stanton Center and Ruski.
Well, they changed that a little bit, Liza. They, they kinda, uh, and we really don't, uh, they, uh, in the past year, we had kinda split it up, but uh, being directions and this and that, uh, distance. So they've been just sticking with the ambulance bay at Washburn as to driving around. Well, it's something that you mean, uh, uh, Mo is the new director. Steve is gonna, the end of the month, Steve is done. So there might be some changes in the wind, we don't know. But that's what the new director can do, you know, so.
So that's normally held the third Thursday of every month at about nine in the morning?
One's at one, nine.
In the summer months, they'd go at nine in the morning and then winter months they go to one, one in the afternoon till about four.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so.
There you go.
There you go.
No, that was Liza's question, I think. The nine A M and the one on here.
Okay.
But they've all been taking place now at the Washburn Ambulance Bay.
That's right, yes.
Okay.
Well. I don't know what the best way to proceed with this is, but.
Well, I went through and there's about um, fourteen, thirteen or fourteen like major ones that we have, you know, like Road Department, Grounds, Tax, Clerk of Courts. So I was thinking if we each took at least two and then some of us might get a couple e- you know, like three of us would probably get a extra one, but I would say like, Road Department is a huge one. So that one probably wouldn't get an extra one, just because the Road Department is so big. But I, I think to me it would be fair to just say each of us get at least two of those and then we can work that out. And then I went through and we have about eight that are monthly meetings. So if we split that out too, and then there's about four that have different ones that are like quarterly meetings kinda too.
Okay.
So I think like, it would be best if we all take our turn at having monthly meetings and not one person gets a whole bunch of monthly meetings they have to go to.
We're, we're not Wayne's.
Like poor Wayne had to do before. But I do think some of them go hand in hand. So like, in my personal opinion, I think if you have Road Department, then you should be on Planning and Zoning.
Okay.
And personally, I would like to have Road Department this time.
I think you got it, if you're asking for.
I have to line my math.
Well, excuse me. Um, before we start with this, I just.
Didn't mean to choke you up there.
Yeah, yeah, no.
That doesn't happen.
The other things, yeah, the other things uh, to think about is, uh, and, and we can go kinda how Liza's going, but um, I wanted to state like, me personally, I should stay away from the Road Department because I, I work with Charlie, who's the engineer, so.
And both Jamie and I need to stay with the sheriff's department.
Stay away from the sheriff's department. So like, some of these make sense not to have and some of them make sense to have, you know, based on some of your experiences or stuff like that. So I guess if we wanted to start.
Let me ask a question. Are you talking about even adjusting portfolios we currently have?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think, you know, Liza talked about the Road Department, so.
Which I think would put me on Planning and Zoning as well.
Okay, so if we're all right with Liza having the road and being on Planning and Zoning, I could mark Road Department and Planning and Zoning for Liza.
Is that okay with everybody else?
If there's any objection.
Yeah, not a problem. I'm not object to that.
What, what, I guess, um, my cur- my curiosity, how does the Planning and Zoning tie in with the, with the Road Department?
There, there's a lot of applications that need the Road Department's approval on, permit crossings.
Non, non, non-farm residents. So the two are marriage that do fit real well. And that you're on Planning and Zoning, now would be a good time to get your other member because we need two, two county commissioners to be on Planning and Zoning.
Right, so, and for Planning and Zoning, I'm, I'm willing to serve on Planning and Zoning. However, I want to know if the board's opinion with me being an engineer and possibly presenting, if they see that as a perceived conflict. If you see that as a pre- perceived conflict, I won't seek Planning and Zoning. However, having my expertise, I feel qualified to, you know, to have it. But what we've done with Planning and Zoning has always been two members, but when they have a quorum issue.
We need an.
We need an alternate.
We need an alternate commissioner, yes.
Right, and.
And the reasoning why is because these people pay for that, uh, pay for that event. And it's horrible to have a board of directors and you don't have a full board. So we've always made sure that we had the commissioners there, one way or the other, that way.
And, and by state law, we're only allowed to have two on the planning, I mean, to be at any time of, of voting on the Planning and Zoning.
True.
Um, there's two required by statute from the city of Stanton and two, at most two can be commissioners. Everybody else is at large. But I like having the alternate, so, you know, I know Rick is, yeah, if, if, but if one of the commissioners can't be there and that creates the quorum, then the alternate would be able to go. And I have done that in the past. Um, so I guess.
I don't disagree with that, I guess.
Yeah, I, and I know Rick had, had expressed some interest in Planning and Zoning. Um, at the next Planning and Zoning meeting, I do have a submittal for a subdivision. So, like I said, it puts me in a weird position because I'm, I do it professionally and if I need to excuse myself, I'll excuse myself, but I just want this board's opinion, whether me being on Planning and Zoning would be a perceived or a inherent conflict of interest.
I don't disagree. I just think the alternate and if Rick is interested, then Rick be the alternate.
Okay. So Rick, would you be willing to be the alternate? Okay. Any, any issues with me being on Planning and Zoning?
No.
Jean?
Jean, any issues with it?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna put Planning and Zoning under myself and then we'll put P N Z alternate for Rick.
I have, can we voice, sorry, can you use your? I have interest in the, oh, sorry, I have interest in the landfill and risk management, I believe it was.
Risk management. I can't hear what you're saying.
Landfill and the risk manager, well, is it, are you talking about emergency one, like Carmen's spot? Are you talking about his ground and maintenance does risk management?
Okay, then that one, yeah.
Okay.
Grounds and maintenance, okay.
So. Buildings, grounds, and maintenance has risk management within it.
Okay, and I think that would be a good fit.
Yep.
So building, ground.
And then she wanted the landfill.
Landfill.
And PNZ.
It's PNZ, PNZ, Road. Okay. Weed Board one, I was kind of thinking either Rick or Jean on that one.
What do you guys think?
I just think with your agricultural backgrounds, it would make sense.
I could be on that.
Do you wanna do it, or do I?
I don't care. I can, oh, I can do it. Mine's been pretty light all these last two years.
So Jean's gonna be Weed Board.
Okay.
Okay. Do those Social Services kinda go together, Human Services and Social Services?
Them two kinda tie together.
Those kinda tie together?
Rick?
The Western Central Human Services and the Dakota Social Services.
And, just to fill you in a little bit, West Central is, uh, probably meets biannually, it's down at Bismarck, close to Saint Mary's, there's a big building, used to be the old bowling alley. And, uh, and it, it ties right into whoever's the Social Service member would, would go to that, so. But it's about two meetings a year.
Jamie has, but then you probably don't want all of those.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Were they saying that?
No. So what do you?
If they, if one of the boys wanted, they'll.
Which one are you talking about?
The both Social Service ones, if anybody's interested.
The other reason I say I can't do it is because of the daytime commitments of all the meetings won't fit with that. Right, so that's why I was wondering if possibly you would be willing to do that.
The Social Services. Yeah, we can always readjust.
Yeah.
So, so Rick's gonna take West Central? And Dakota?
And Dakota. I'll take the Airport Authority if nobody else wants that.
I like your choice of words.
I'll be in touch with you on some of the stuff. Keep me informed on it. Next Thursday?
Okay.
I can keep the Clerk of Court, State's Attorney, and Sheriff, I have no problem with those, and don't think they've objected to me being on there.
Who's taking the Airport?
Liza. So Clerk of Court, with Jean.
State's Attorney and Sheriff.
I would like to do the Sheriff too, but that's. I've kinda had some conversations with Terry on that one.
Well, and, I mean, just because somebody has it as a portfolio, it's not like one of us, other ones can't talk to them, or, you know, so.
Can I, like, do we break up Clerk of Court, State's Attorney, and Sheriff, or are they all together?
We can break them up.
We can break them up, just, Jean said he'd be willing to do them again, unless.
I had them, I had them previously, so.
I don't, yeah.
So Sheriff as well? Okay.
Where are you on yours? You got the same sheet I got there?
No, I just.
No, I'm asking Travis.
No, I'm just, I got them all listed here, and I'm writing them separately, so there's less confusion. Okay. So, under MARV, we had Coal Conversion.
MARV.
I typically go to those anyway, and I also go to Vision West. So I'm willing to take Coal Conversion and Vision West.
Where's that one?
Vision West?
Yeah, where's that?
Um, all over the western part of the state.
No, 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 no.
No, no, on our papers.
Oh, Gas and Oil Counties slash Vision West, sorry.
Oh, now I see it.
Okay.
It, it's basically the energy, um, components. Let's see. I, I think Rick should take the Fair Board, since he's on the Fair Board. The county part is a non-voting member, but he's gonna know more about that Fair Board than any of us could ever dream.
You okay with that, Rick?
He's, he's gotta be there anyway.
I, I take care of ninety percent of the areas.
Fair Board. Who had that one?
I, I had it.
Travis.
Yeah.
Oh, there, Mercer County Fair Board.
And part of the Library Board, to, you know, I was, my term actually, 'cause I have to be a member of that board, my term actually goes through twenty-four, so I'm willing to keep the Library Board, especially since we just updated our, our signature cards at the last meeting. And, I, I'm good with Water Resource Board, unless anybody wants that, but it's a non-voting member on that one.
I already wrote Travis there.
Okay, I guess it's mine, and.
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
Jamie said she'll take.
Okay, Jamie will take Superintendent of Schools.
Superintendent of Schools.
I don't know if Buster's still here, but Buster, he still does that, doesn't he?
He still does it, yeah.
He was my principal.
Oh, okay.
I, I know for a fact I can't be on the Policy Committee, so somebody else has to take that one.
Okay. That's.
Policy Committee?
Policy Committee.
I was on it before, I, I can be on it, we meet, what, once every two years, uh?
So you're good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and Jamie probably can't be on that one either.
I was gonna say, I think.
So, Jean has Policy Committee.
Auditor, who's got Auditor?
Nobody yet.
I can just, I think, I'll just throw this out there, I think the Chairman should have the Auditor, because you kinda work hand in hand with the Auditor, and it's your.
Okay, I'll take the Auditor.
I'll take the Treasurer, if anybody else wants that.
Liza will be Treasurer.
There's Treasurer, there it is.
Okay, all MARVs are gone, um, the only ones that.
I mean, Tax Director.
Tax Director.
Who had Extension Agency?
Um, I had them, I'm willing to keep Extension. I was just trying to get, um.
Oh, and there's Vision West, that's Travis also.
Yep. But, um, Tax Director, um, I think that should be somebody with Planning and Zoning, just because she kinda is the holder of Planning and Zoning.
So that's me, are you then, what you're saying?
Paperwork, so it is.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take Tax Director. Okay.
What about Mercer County Economic Development?
I had it before, I don't, I'll do it again unless somebody else wants it.
Um, I'll probably attend those, but only one of us could be a voting member, so we just have to distinguish who that would be. And Jean, if you wanna continue going to those.
I don't mind.
Okay.
Same thing there, they have a meeting too often. Monday.
Monday, yep. Jean will be McEd, and if Jean can't make it, and I'm there, I can assume the county's vote.
Okay, so we need North Dakota Missouri River Advisory Council.
What is, Jean, Jean is on it right now.
Yeah.
Have you had a meeting with that?
No, I haven't yet to have a meeting with North Dakota Missouri River Council.
Okay.
Western Dakota Energy, I was, I got a meeting here, but, yeah, that's the same thing, they haven't had one. I don't care, I can keep, unless somebody wants them.
I, I could take them too, it doesn't matter, I could take those two.
You can have them.
Okay, so Jamie's gonna have North Dakota Missouri.
Missouri River Advisory Council.
And Dakota Energy.
Western Dakota.
Jamie?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. We're down to.
So then we got, uh.
Mercer County Ambulance, who?
Yeah, Mercer County Ambulance, which is now meeting the third Tuesday in Hazen. I just wanna know, third Thursday, I just wanna make sure it isn't a. I can keep Ambulance, if you guys want me to.
Doesn't matter. I'm not gonna arm wrestle you for it, that's for sure.
So Ambulance.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't running into Planning and Zoning, that's what I was checking.
Right. So the LEPC, what's that one?
That's the one that's tied in with Carmen's position, and especially the Emergency Management one, and then 911, where she goes over, like, um, where they wanna do their scenarios and all of that. Usually meets quarterly, maybe. It's usually around noon.
I could do the LEPC.
Jamie's gonna do.
LEPC?
Veteran Services?
I've had it, but I've never been a veteran, but I didn't know if you guys have it, and it just, to me, it would fit better as a veteran, but.
Rick, were you a veteran, or?
Uh-uh.
Jean, oh.
Got veterans in the family.
Yeah. Yeah, me too.
They wouldn't let me go.
They won't let you go? I think we need to get a little bit more on to Rick.
Yep, and say, looks like Rick's a little thin.
You wanna do Veteran Services?
Like I said, I don't have a reason, we're off the board, if you give us.
Okay, we're gonna give Veteran Services.
Everything I, it didn't happen, so it's not gonna worry you about it.
All right.
Do we have Emergency Management?
Um, I don't know how we're gonna do that one.
Okay.
That one might have to be assigned after we determine what we're gonna do with it.
Sure. Lewis and Clark Regional Development?
And that's the alternate one, I've never gone on that one.
Okay. I'm going to the meeting on Thursday next week.
Which one?
The Lewis and Clark Regional Development, so one's an alternate, one's the voting member, I'm the voting member. I'll, I'll keep that one, since I'm planning on going to it next week. Lewis and Clark, um, do we have an alternate for that one?
I can say alternate.
You're gonna say alternate?
Yeah.
Um, Recorder. Anybody want the Recorder?
Who has Extension?
I have Extension.
You kept Extension?
Yeah, I kept Extension. Um, anybody want the Recorder?
Going once, going twice.
I think Recorder's the only one left.
Not all I see on my list. Oh, who had Custer Health?
Okay.
Who had Custer Health?
Who was Custer Health?
What one, Custer Health? Marvin always talked about that.
That's not a portfolio, that's actually a board appointment. Rick, you already taken the Recorder?
Whatever you put me on.
Okay, we'll give Recorder to Rick.
Which one was it that you wanted?
We're going forward, don't worry about it.
Um, let's see, and as far as the Custer Health, I did talk to Erin, was it Custer Health? And she did state that she requested MARV to stay on that. And where is?
Also Marvin's gonna stay on that, 'cause that's a board appointment, you said?
It's a board appointment, I'm looking for it, but I believe his term goes through twenty-three or twenty-four.
I thought that's what he said last meeting.
I thought it was twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-three or twenty-four.
Yeah, so. But that's not on my list, anyway.
It looks like.
I think we got everything.
Most.
The only one is not the, is the EM 911, but I think we wait to.
Lewis and Clark Regional Development Center?
That's one where Travis is the main one, and I'm the alternate?
Yep.
Oh, it's on here twice, sorry, oh, now I know it's on there twice, never mind.
I think we got everything.
I think so.
But, like I said, though, really, it's.
These, these are pretty big.
And most I seen under Jean is gained. Weed Board. As I gained Weed Board, and no longer on Missouri River and Western Dakota.
Okay.
That's it. Kept my other ones.
That's what we're, well, I mean. You were thinking about the Sheriff, weren't you, Rick? Well, we might give you that one.
Because he's got three bigger ones, and this, this one's pretty little.
Veteran Services.
I'm doing like I told you.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Peoples and stuff like that.
Right. Jean, you already given the Sheriff to Rick?
I don't care.
Okay. Let's move Sheriff to Rick. Is this one Dakota Central Services? Yeah.
He's got these two.
The top two together?
Yeah, which are?
Those are a big one.
Those are big ones.
Which one?
The Human Services.
And then Dakota Central Services.
So it might look like you don't have a lot, but you got two of the predominant ones. Time-consuming ones.
I'm fine with whatever I told you, I said I won't, whatever you go put on, it'll actually.
One, did you get all of that?
I did, I wanna read them back to you guys to make sure.
Okay, Travis got the list.
All right, do you want me to read it, or are you gonna read it?
Either way.
Did you do it by person, or did you do it by category?
I did it by person.
So did I. Okay, so under Jean, we have the Weed Board, Clerk of Court, State's Attorney, Policy Committee, and McEd. Yeah, Mercer County Economic Development.
Okay.
Sorry, that's the acronym.
Okay.
And that's all you had on Jean, right?
Yep.
Okay, Rick, we had PNZ alternate, the West Central Human Services, Dakota Central Social Services, Fair Board, Veteran Services, Recorder, and Sheriff. Okay, and then, under myself, I had PNZ, Coal Conversion, Vision West, that's also the oil and gas, Library Board, Water Resource Board, Auditor, Extension, Tax Director, and then the Mercer County Economic Development alternate, and the Lewis and Clark Voting Member. And then Liza is the Road Department, Planning and Zoning, Airport, Treasurer, Ambulance, and the Lewis and Clark alternate. Jamie has Building and Grounds, Landfill, Superintendent of Schools, North Dakota Missouri River, uh, Western Dakota, and then the LEPC. And then, at a different date, we'll worry about Emergency Management and 911. 'Cause, depending on how we do that, that might actually go whoever's got the Sheriff, and then. Because depending on how we do that, that might actually go whoever's got the sheriff, and then.
So between now and then, if they have a question, who, can they ask, who do I direct them to?
Um, I'd say at this point, we're kind of keeping that with the sheriff, so I would put EM nine-one-one with Rick, until we determine what we're doing with that. All right. That, to make it formal, is there a motion to approve the portfolios as, as assigned?
So moved.
Motion by Liza, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. If I haven't missed anything, I think that's everything on our agenda.
So we do the chair at the next?
We do the chair in January.
January.
Chair and vice chair?
First meeting in January.
First meeting in January. Uh, just a reminder, uh, next meeting, the twenty-first, is at the Museum in Billa. Uh, it'll be at nine o'clock, like normal. And seeing no further business, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody, for working on that out.